All right, counsel, one of the first things we need to do this evening is we have a couple public hearings. So I'm opening the hearing for ordinance 414, amending the B3 central business district in the zoning code. Is there anyone here that would like to make comment? Okay. I'm going to close that hearing. Opening the hearing for ordinance 514, which is amending the sign code. Try to make wait an appropriate amount of time, give you time to think about it. Do you want to comment? All right, I'm closing that hearing. All right, counsel, you received the minutes from the August 11 meeting. Any comments or motion?
Motion approved, that's August 11.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
We also received current expenses. Any questions?
I'm making a motion to approve the expenses submitted.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move into reports. Again, do you have anything?
The only thing I have is I had sent out an email earlier today regarding the pool refinancing. Just if you have any questions, just let me know.
I couldn't open it. It didn't have the extension on it, on mine. And I don't know if it's my computer or I can't download anything that doesn't have the extension, like the DOC or PDF. So that's why I couldn't open it.
Do you have DOCX?
Yes.
Was it PDF?
Oh, mine didn't say PDF on it.
Mine doesn't either. It just says file, so it has no extension.
Okay. Let's try it again. All right.
Thank you.
No problem.
It's the same, but we got it personnel.
Right, right. I will send it out again.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, Chief.
I just have a few things to report tonight. The first thing is Sergeant McKee attended the annual Amber Alert Training Course held in Columbus as well. Monday, August 18, the Drive, Sober Get Pulled Over Campaign started nationwide initiative, and that runs through September 1st. We'll be increasing our efforts to detect impaired motors during that time. I've also sent Officer Prather and Officer Flowers. They attended the A-Ride Instructor's Course, which is Advanced Roadside Impairs Driver's Education. It's a step up from the standard field sobriety testing course. It also, it's good for detection of drugs and alcohol. And I attended the Madison County Safety Coalition Meeting at the Engineers' Office. And last but not least, panel interviews were conducted for volunteer applicants. Thank Councilman Kennedy and Mr. Walter for sitting in on those. We have one applicant that's going through to the polygraph phase in the background investigation at that time, the volunteer that we selected. So that's all I have to report.
Any questions? Thanks for notifying us about Representative Polanda and recognizing Officer Prather and Howard for their role in the fire at the ice wada. Okay. Administrator Vaughn.
As I'm sure everybody's seen by now, the work on the water towers has begun. They started last Thursday. The pipe that I spoke to you guys about last week, the 15-foot section that needed replaced has been replaced. They did that over the weekend, so we're in the process of getting it all sand blasted and painted. They'll be at Jefferson for the next couple of weeks, and then we will move over to Bigelow, and that'll be probably about four weeks over there, because it's inside and outside. We did lose funding in both county OPWIC grants for various reasons, but we're going to continue to work toward finding some resolution to that. Also, both of them are going to go to small government funding for that round of funding through that source. So it's not completely dead yet, but we did lose the initial funding. And that's all I have. If there's any questions.
How long is the water tower project supposed to take then?
It should be about six to eight weeks.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Pressman Proten.
Only one thing tonight, Mayor, and that is we were approached by Resident Jim Walter about our April minutes, April 14 minutes, where we had discussed giving him permission to tap into a sanitary sewer line. And I think what he was saying was that the minutes from that night, he didn't feel were clear enough, or our statement that night that we made were clear enough. And I thought what I would do is just read you what the minutes say, and then I could read you what he's requested, and we can hash it out. The minutes read like this. Jim Walter, village resident and business owner of the Plain City Lanes, was present to request permission to tap into a private sanitary sewer line. Both Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Lafayette agreed this tap was in the best interest for the business owner and the village. Mr. Kennedy motioned to allow the tap. Six ye votes. I think what he's wanting, Mr. Walter's wanting, is a little bit more of a statement, detail. Here's what he recommended, and I'm okay with it after reading this and comparing it, but I wanted to let you guys know. He's requesting that we say something like this. Jim Walter, village resident and business owner of Plain City Bowling Alley Incorporated at 325 South Jefferson, Plain City, Ohio, requests permission to tap into a private sanitary sewer line located on John Hootred's property located at 301 South Jefferson Avenue in Plain City, Ohio. I think he just would like to have it very specific, maybe for legal reasons. So we can do it a couple ways. If we're okay with that, we can amend the minutes, or we can just make it a new, maybe, resolution or something, whatever you guys would like. I mean, I imagine, does anyone have any questions? Do you want to see his note or?
Is what you write accurate? As far as the address, is that, are you?
Yes.
I met him in the parking lot. He wasn't feeling well. I'll have to somewhere.
So, I mean, I could introduce just a resolution, you know, I move that.
Can I introduce one thing? If we're going to get that specific, I would like some language added into that that does state that that is also binding, that Mr. Walter agreed to and signed contract with the village regarding the capacity fee financing.
So is this something we need to hold off to until next meeting, or you just wanted, did you want to?
No, just so that's stated, that it's not going to, they're not going to tap in without signing the agreement that Mr. Lafayette has drafted.
How about we craft that statement?
Yeah, if it's going to get this detailed, it would be nice, maybe, have everybody look at it and have something. I don't think there's a major rush.
There is a bit of a major rush, but not on the village's part. This was, this has been ongoing for at least six months now, maybe six months, and things have drug on this, not by the fault of the village. So I am okay with having to wait to get it right. But there is a significant time press to the business.
Someone was digging in the parking lot just this weekend.
I know they were placing a.
We're down, I saw someone throwing buckets of water out of them.
Right in the front. I know they were placing a storm call for a catch basin. I don't know if that's what they were digging at. I didn't.
And he'd asked me to sign minutes, which I did have to. Now is that's offered.
Well, I think the attorney, Mr. Hootred, has asked for more specifics. And I think in the long run, it'd be the best interest of the village to have specifics of this surfaces six years, seven years from now. And we wonder what was agreed to and what were the terms of it, so.
Do you have terms worked out with Mr. Walter? I can't.
They've been worked out with Mr. Walter. We are, Paul has not drafted those, that agreement yet.
That agreement probably would supersede the importance of the minutes.
Mr. Hootred's going to say.
And he wants them to understand.
You just say something simply like the minutes, the terms of the agreement will be reflected in a written document. You could just, the minutes could just reference the document, and then they're both there. And then we don't have to craft anything.
But we didn't have a document yet.
Right.
We didn't at the time of the minutes.
Hold on that side. You guys want to hold off and just let, make sure everything is right before we proceed?
I'm assuming before next council, maybe you can get the language worked on for me next time.
So we'll just table that and maybe have Mr. Lafayette and Mr. Vaughn kind of make sure everything is, needs to be, and let us know.
It'd be good to run a draft by Mr. Walters in advance before coming to council, so it can be, we can close the door on it once and for all. It'll be our draft, making sure he has a chance to know what's coming.
Okay. That's all for Pressman Proten.
Okay. Do you want to come back to Park?
We can do it real quick now, if you're okay with that. Nothing major, other than I think we're going to hear from representatives from the steam threshers tonight, and I think in the works will be a meeting between the village and steam threshers to kind of work out areas that were successful, things that we can improve on for next year. And so while that's still fresh in everyone's mind, so we'll keep you posted on that. Mr. Vaughn will probably keep us posted, and maybe I'll be in that meeting or whomever as we proceed with that. And we don't really have a park meeting set due at this point, but we'll probably meet in September as we, because of things we have on tap for the fall, so I'll keep you all posted on that.
Thank you. And what was it here this evening?
Nothing too new. You received the monthly reports for the inspector, I hear from the mayor today, that we reviewed during the meeting. The next meeting, Mr. Smucker plans on coming in to present the Jackson Street site plans, and we're awaiting the property maintenance document from the hall to review for next time.
Thank you. BCA.
BCA finally got to meet. We met last Monday, August 18, and we had two issues to discuss. Agape Christian Church was given their variance to add a small addition to their building. And Daniel and Linda Aerosmith on Chillicothe Street was also given a variance to build a 30 by 30 garage at the Rarico property. We also did get the schedule set up for the steps and terms, so we're all good there.
Thank you. Kevin, CIC. Pressman, please.
Counsel had a work session where we discussed our 2014 budget, year-to-date versus the plan. We had that meeting last week on August 19, and things appear to be tracking very well this year. Our first Personnel and Finance meeting for the 2015 budget planning process is scheduled for Tuesday, September 9. And is 6:30 acceptable?
Works for me.
6:30 better. Yep. That's all I have to report now.
Thank you. Ms. Feyer.
Last month, there was 46 fire runs and 76 EMS runs. And they have a UU mill tray of iron up and running again. And so far this year, the fire has taken in 1.3 million in receipts, and we've spent 713,000 in the fall report.
All right, thank you. All right, we went from Abqoda.
I know they had their car show, and it seemed to be well attended.
I have not heard numbers yet, but.
It looks like they had more entries than last year. How much?
176 entries.
According to the revenue, it could be maybe slightly higher in that there were some preregistrations.
That was around 1:00 o'clock, so they made.
Yeah, so, but that's pretty much on target, and that's up from last year, although it was really stinking hot.
It's very hot. It's great when they have tent. Yes, that worked well. And I believe it's Julie's last year for running that, is that correct? Julie Lieber has certainly done a great job for the village. I don't think she's quitting, but she's not going to be running that next year. We appreciate all she's done. All right, so counsel, in old business, we have the third reading of ordinance 414, which is amending the B3 central business district in the zoning code. Motion to pass ordinance 4-14. Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
We have the third reading of ordinance 514, amending the sign code.
Motion to pass third reading of ordinance 514.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, we have new business, and first one on the agenda is leg hole traps, and why we don't really have new business for that. Paul has not provided us anything new, so we really don't have anything to discuss. I saw Robin here. Did you want to address counsel or?
I sent an email. I don't know if you guys got it. With the Ohio Wildlife Center, Angela Latham had suggested that maybe having one of their employees meet with you guys and go over some things. One of the things she did bring up was that those traps are actually to be used for fur-bearing animals, not for squirrels or for cats, which is what I had mentioned in the email, and that they also can't be set in any place where it's close to walkways or that kind of thing. So she brought up some things that I think were important for you guys to think about.
Yeah, sure. Great, thank you. Great effort, then. I saw you also sent something.
I did. I drafted some legislation that's basically a cruelty to animal statute. Obviously, it would need to be modified, and we would need to discuss the penalties that would apply. I don't know if those blank. But I think, in my opinion, this kind of covers everything that we're concerned about here, without moving into Mr. Records' needs there. For example, it does have provisions to address protecting public property, health, other animals, those types of things. I think it addresses Sean's concerns, limiting rights that folks already have. This takes that into account. And I think really it gets to, maybe more succinctly, to the heart of what we're concerned about, which is basically, almost seems not just the leg traps, but the ancillary issue of maybe torturing the animals within the village. So I think this covers all of those things. I know I got it to you all late, so I apologize for that. So obviously, you don't have much, you hadn't had much chance to look at it before now, but I think this might be a better alternative, but I'd love to hear everyone else's thoughts once you have a chance to read it.
Okay. Did you copy Paul on that?
He doesn't get the city, the council.
Not the council.
I'll do that, yeah.
Great, thank you.
When I passed out to you two, I spent the day looking at other cities across the United States that have similar enforcement. And probably the one I found that might fit us, the easiest, the best, is from Memphis, Tennessee. It's the one on the top. And it just simply says, "It is unlawful for any person to set or bait any steel leg trap or other contrivance which would may mutilate or seriously injure an animal." That's simple.
Okay.
Because I was reading back here, and we have a lot of things that apply to, you know, cruelty to animals already. So if we could just add that one sentence.
I think what Chief said a couple meetings back was the ordinances that we currently have in place only apply domesticated animals, domestic animals. They don't apply to things such as feral cats or squirrels, which is what we're, you know, what we're looking to correct here.
Okay. So if you have that electronically, can you forward that to Paul as well?
Yes.
Unless just have a.
Yes.
I forwarded what Robin sent us, and I do think that maybe we can have someone come in and if not talk to us, at least talk to John and Kevin, and if they have some ideas about how we can control the skunks and the raccoons, then maybe that would be real helpful to us. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All of you. All right, moving on then. Did you want to speak?
Yes, I would. I think I don't have one feeling one way or the other about the leg hole trap, because I used to use it when I was a kid and trapped muskrat. And, you know, everybody gets all excited about getting fingers and toes and so on. And I had about a mile of trapping, and I got my fingers and my toes caught, and I still have 10, 20 actually. And the thing that bothers me more than that is the realization that people no longer teach their children to respect other people's private property. And that happens most every day on that creek, because those kids get down in the creek and throw stones, pull out, whatever, throw rocks. And I know from experience that you have to be careful about what you do and what you say, because there are more attorneys per capita than we would like to realize. And when I see them going through my concrete, smooth concrete walk that goes from Gay Street to Chillicothe Street, running their bicycles just as fast as they can, I often wonder, wonder what happens if they hit that flower pot that's sitting in the middle. I have a pretty good idea, referring back to the attorneys per capita. And that really bothers me that we allow that to go on. And if they're going to run through there, as they do on the way to school, what happens if they trip on a raised piece of concrete and skin themselves up? What happens if they jump off the bridge and break a leg? Now, I've dealt with the village in the past about things like that. That's why they're at this end of each of the signage on each of my road, is because I caught wind that the village was going to take it over. And I thought, I don't believe that's going to happen. It's my property. And, but I've had other issues dealing way back about spraying Roundup on the banks of the creek there, which no one that I could contact would do anything about. So it really bothers me that we have reached a point where we do not recognize the responsibility of other people to take care of their own property and let other people not trespass. That was another thing they did. They took down my trespassing signs and threw them in the creek.
The kids did?
The kids did. Yeah, I had to, years ago, several years ago, had to run the village workers off because they were trimming bushes on the creek bank. And then, you know, I smelled Roundup, and I asked the, I forget what he was called, village administrator or something about it, and he laughed it off. And so I called Madison County Soil and Water, and they said, "Well, it's within the village city limits. We don't deal with that. But why don't you take samples of soil samples and water samples and turn them in and see what it turns up?" And I said, "Well, that'd be, that'd work really well, except out at the farm, I have about 10 gallons of Roundup." And they'll know that, and they'll say, "Well, you probably planted it." So I'm really, I'm really upset about the way that parenting is conducted, because any of us that are over 40, and I'm way over that, I didn't get on people's property, because if I did, and my dad heard about it, it was a long, hard evening. And this is, this is just, to me, this is just one more impingement upon our liberties. I don't know where the guy put up the traps, but if it was on his property, I don't understand why we should, we should govern that. Now, if it's on the sidewalk, near the sidewalk, or whatever. But if you sit down and realize over the last 40 years, how many of our liberties have we lost? Maybe it shouldn't be that important to me, because I'm going to die for long, I hope, especially if I've watched the national news. And it just, it just irritates me that people don't teach their kids to respect other people's property.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Certainly, if we had the power to control parents, then we really would be opposing. But we understand what you're saying in the form of appreciation.
And I still don't know what to do about the kids that get down in the creek. I was kind of hoping they'd all get poison ivy, but they didn't.
You need to quit.
There you go, Alan. Done that.
Well, you know, if you, you can always certainly call the police if there's something that you need assistance with.
Well, I understand that, but that's just bothersome.
Yeah. All right, anyone else? Okay. All right, we're going to move on, and we have Sean Kelly would like to address counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you with Steve Thresher?
No.
Okay.
Ryan Keatranoff.
Steve Thresher is here this evening to address counsel, I believe. Did you want to this evening? No one signed up, but we had you on the agenda.
Nothing particularly. I met with Mr. Vaughn a few weeks ago, and he had mentioned that maybe we should attend this meeting just as a communication if there's, I guess, any questions, or if there's anything that you're discussing that we can answer while we're here. I didn't have anything to bring to counsel, per se, this evening.
How did this, how did we feel the show went this year?
It was fairly successful. Our numbers were up from last year, so I guess that means it was a success. We didn't lose any money this year.
Well attended.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we, originally, they thought, we thought there might be some discussion with the council, but as the more that parks thought about it, they figured the committee and you guys could talk through this and bring it back, which is a good way for that to work, then, you know, they can bring a recommendation to council, if they need more information, we can get it for them. It's a good way for that to work. Yes, Sis.
The only thing I got to say is I grew up in this town. I'm 50, I'll be 53 years old. And the steam thresher means a whole lot. I am vice president of the, of the steam show this year. And, you know, I hear a lot of flack from people about, "We're not going to be here. We're going to be gone," and all this. You know what? I know it's a bunch of hogwash. You know, we have a contract with you guys, and, you know, I'm not saying that we're not looking for someplace that could happen, you know what I mean? But we're not planning on leaving. We want to stay here. We want to be a part of this community. And I think there's a lot of people in this room right now appreciate the steam threshers more than a lot of people realize. You know, you know, I started when I was little, when it was in London, and now I'm here. And I wasn't a part of it when I was there, but I am here. And as of Plain City, helping us with things at the park, when we're out there, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to give Kevin and his crew and the police a big thank you, because they did help us a lot, you know, with nothing to amount to anything, just little things here and there that we need, you know. We, we're starting to get a lot better communication with Plain City, and I really think that that's a big, big, big plus, you know.
Yes, for many years, we kept hearing, "You don't like us, and you don't want us here," and we're glad we're not hearing that this year.
You'll never hear that from me. Guarantee it.
Great, okay, well then, we look forward to the discussions that you guys have, and hopefully get to some good resolutions. We know that there are a few things that somehow just did not get included in the contract that you, I think you guys can work out, and we can amend it or do whatever, but we all know that it was talked about, but it didn't end up in the contract, so. So appreciate you coming, thank you. Alright, I'm not seeing anything else on the agenda, council. I had written down a bit somewhere. Bring that back, maybe not. What was that?
I just wanted for you to be down. I, I don't know if anybody had time to see that I sent the GGC engineering proposal. Brian is here. If you had, have you had, has anybody had time to look at it? Does anybody have questions? This will be the, if we decide to go through with this. This is on the downtown revitalization for everyone. If we decide to go through with this, this will be our first step.
The scope of services that was defined in this document was, I asked questions at the earlier meeting, and it pretty much addressed those questions. Because there was a number of activities that I knew had cost associated with them, didn't know whether they were inclusive of, exclusive of, and, you know, how roles and responsibilities were going to be defined. I think this document goes a long way to answering some of those questions, so.
Okay, great.
I have not had a chance to read it, because I didn't work today, but I'll definitely look at it.
To add a little bit to the contract itself, we set it up in a phased approach, so that you don't have to proceed with the entire contract right now. I think there's language in there that identifies that, so we want to move forward with the preliminary stage before we jump into a final stage. We are more than willing, wanting to move forward that way.
Great. Well, we are still trying to sort out Planning and Zoning, and, but appreciate the information. I too, I glanced over it, but I saw a figure. Get to read it, but thank you. Did you have anything else? Alright, council, anyone have anything else? The Valentine, that whole piece from 42 North, it, end of this month is that the notice is finished, so hopefully, at that point, then we'll have some answers for that. The other thing was something from PNC that we talked about that I was going to share, but...
Doesn't matter, Mr. Jordan's violations list, will you?
No, I sent an email back. Darren, do you, did you have anything you wanted to speak to? If you don't know, Darren, he is the chair of Planning and Zoning, Darren Lee, and Darren, there was concern with the wind energy about the magnetic interference. You commented in PNC, did you want to make that? I think I'm pretty likely going to amend it, maybe not, like you said.
Yeah, I was just going to look into it a little bit more. Council had some concerns about, you know, the way things were worded, or if something may need to be added. Most of those communications or issues are regulated by the FCC, anything that gives off a signature like that. I mean, it has a spectrum that's allowed by the FCC, and everything is basically allowed to operate within a given spectrum, and it's not allowed to give off interference to cause issues with other devices that are outside that spectrum, so.
And I looked at...
The manufacturers should take care of that, as far as their, their manufacturing process, but we can look into it a little more.
I looked at my previous notes from the council on that, and I had that Ms. Lafayette was going to look up the FCC for the, for the wind piece.
And if it meets an FCC spec, it, it addresses the concerns that I brought up. And I did share something with Colleen, I think it was after our work session, suggesting that if there is a decision to go forward with wind energy as possibly, rather than consider it as a, just consider it as maybe a conditional use associated with the property owner, not the property, so it, it required that it be properly maintained and removed if it becomes non-functional. Remember how all the old dishes, you know, were for TVs, you know, were sitting around, so...
I believe that provision is already...
Okay. But were you looking at it as a conditional use? Because the other thing is, I looked at, I actually looked at one of these up in Marysville, on top of the Ace Hardware, on west side of Marysville. And I really wouldn't want to see something of that size in a residential neighborhood. It's just, I can see where it would have commercial value to, to a business. I could see where it would be an eyesore in a residential neighborhood, on a 30-foot pole, and I could see where it could affect the, the rights of adjoining property owners indirectly, and that's why I'm thinking a conditional use would at least give notice to the adjoining property owners of a pending application, and let them be able to voice concerns or state that they don't have any concerns. But, you know, if it's going to impact their property, they should have a little bit of a say as well.
Alright.
That's a possibility, if we look into the conditional use aspect a little bit.
And you can remind Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Darren. Alright, anything else? Counsel, if anything?
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Alright, thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.